Hour has struck, 7:00. Our friends downstairs will have the cameras rolling. I'll officially call the July 25th, 2018 work session to order. And we'll let the minutes reflect that, excuse me, yeah, we'll let the minutes reflect that all the board members are present, as well as one staff member, Mr. Costello. Thank you for coming in off of vacation and a number of folks in the audience. So before I go on any further, I'm going to announce the fact that under action items, Item B, Mary Winn, that's a special permitted, 2567 Brauncroft Boulevard. She contacted my office this afternoon. She asked that this matter be held until August 8th, so that gives her the opportunity to continue looking at and modifying plans that she has. So the board will not be discussing that matter tonight. So if you're here for Mary Winn, 2567 Brauncroft Boulevard, that will be a held matter before this board. We'll move on to minutes. You have the July 11th, 2018 minutes before you, and would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes. Moved, seconded by Councilwoman Metzler. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I ask for a roll call vote, excuse me, I ask for a voice vote. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries, minutes are approved. Thank you, Lisa, as always, for that. Monty reports are all in and caught up. There are no public hearings this evening. We do have one guest, Ted Pittenarrow. This is requested in solid driveway onto Motts Lane. Mr. Costello, I'll ask that you tee it up further from there.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Pittenarrow's been before the PRC, and he's met with Eric Tate and Mark Valentine and myself and Mike O'Connor a couple of times. His intent is, as you know, he owns the property at 1771 Penfield Road, which is adjacent to the Motts Lane extension that comes now out on the Penfield Road. He's recently remodeled it. His intent is to lease that out. He came to us with the intent of trying to develop a driveway into the terminus of Motts Lane. In meeting with Mark and Eric earlier this last week, they did receive his plan a while back and actually gave some direction. Their comment was, if he were to lease the property as strictly a residence, you know, as you had people coming and going as a residence, they would support this plan as he shows it now. If he's going to lease it as a residence and office, which I think his intent is, he's got a law office on the first floor proposed, as a matter of fact, there will be a public hearing coming up in August.
Right, we scheduled the last one.
They'll be reviewing, and then the attorney's mother will be living on the second floor. So in talking to Eric and Mark, their comment was, if there's going to be a business there where people are coming and going on a day-to-day basis or whatever frequency, their recommendation would be one of two things. Number one, either create a new driveway area further to the north, halfway between the rear property line and where the house is situated now, to come out onto the Motts Lane extension. That would give them the ability to move forward and go out to Penfield Road to the right, or to come back Motts Lane and go all the way back to Five Mile Line Road if they wish. The other side was, if he didn't want to do that, and we initially looked at the possibility of bringing it down where the tree line is back there, he didn't want to do that, that was going to cost a few thousand dollars to do that. That would've come right across from Dr. Di Pietro's entrance, which would've been nice, but it is, it is an obstruction there. The other option would then be to, if you were going to utilize the back portion instead of opening up closer to the house, they would then request the town board, if you were to grant, if you were to grant the approval to do it, they would want the gutters extended onward as a word, continue on the roadway, because as you note, that dark patch of asphalt there is actually on the town property and not on his. So the intent would be to extend that road to the property line and then allow him to tie in at his property line as a normal driveway would. So he's here asking for relief to probably allow this one or the other one I discussed further north.
Right, right.
Because it's so close to...
Well, as you know, and you can see it on the plan, I'm sorry it's not a blow-up, but there are currently three or four posts in the ground, four-by-four posts that have red markers on them, reflectors, so that people don't continue on into his yard. Two of those would probably have to be removed to allow for the access road to go into his property if, if he were to go with the route that he's proposing right now. If he were to be required to extend out the gutters and complete the road to the property line, then those, those markers would then be moved back to his property, then the general public would not be allowed to go on his property without his permission. So I guess I'm going to leave it to you now, tell the board what it is you want and what you're proposing.
Well, first of all, good evening, Mr. Fontaine and board members. My name is Ted Pittenarrow, a former retired school teacher and part-time real estate broker, okay. I purchased the property, as you well know, probably extensively about seven, eight years ago, and if any of you had a look at the property prior to the root, to the rehabilitation on it, there'd been some extensive rehab and rehabilitation, both interior and exterior, to make it conducive to, let's say, the town of Penfield, of course, obviously myself as well, to actually improve the value as well, as well as could be, okay. Right now, right now, what's, way it stands right now, ladies and gentlemen, is that we have a driveway which comes in off of Penfield Road, goes to the back, and what I've had done in the back now is in preparation for an asphalt driveway. It's all been pre-planned, the stone is down, but the asphalt's not in yet. And, and as I thought, I kept saying, you know, gee, I see so many accidents out there. I see people getting hurt, trucks running over things, and, and I said, gee, you know, to make my property conducive to someone to rent it, which I haven't rented now to an attorney and his mother, okay, which I find is very nice, very feasible, very likeable, and it's professional, okay, I said to myself, well, let me be honest with you, and it's two ways. Once it improves the value, and secondly, accommodates those people coming into the property and exiting out, such as the Rockford Building next door to it. So the main, the main objective that I have there is, is obviously twofold, is to improve the property, and secondly, to alleviate any accidents that may take place. And to do that, I had Costage, is it Costage? Mr. Costage, the engineer, go ahead and design a site plan, okay, which you can see on the board there, which explains pretty, pretty much the extent of detail in terms of grade, entrance and exit of the property, and in terms of, like Mr. Costello said, we'll be coming into some of the property that the town owns, okay? So what we'll be doing is, you know, budding up to it, okay, in a sense, to put in the gravel and the crushed stone, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, okay? I guess that, that pretty much summarizes what I'd like to do, and the main reason, in all sincerity, is that accommodate the people that live there, okay, and the people that come in there. Now, the tenant that I have is a, is an attorney, okay, to Mr. Mark Lewis, okay, who'll be coming in, his mother, and she has one child there living with her, okay? And I feel also that if I'm going to rent the property, which I finally did to a professional, it's going to look nice, work nice, be nice for the town of Penfield, and accommodate the need for the particular individual, as well as help to improve the property for the town of Webster. I mean, Penfield, I taught him Webster, I'm sorry.
No, got it, no problem, no problem.
Okay. Do you have any questions? You know, I'd be glad to help answer anything that may be on your mind. I hope it was explained so that you have a good understanding, a clear understanding.
So, so I think for everybody's benefit, so today the road ends here.
Right.
He wants to tie in here.
Right.
And this portion is on our property. And he is prepared to extend that to our town specs?
Well, to the town specs, in the sense that the depth of the road and all that is put there. But right now, what he wants to do is, he just wants to put the pavement in. He does not want to extend gutters.
Okay.
Or basically extend the road as a spec road, as a dedicated road type situation.
So what discussion took place? Because today, when we plow, we plow in and continue up, so from a snow storage standpoint, what discussion do you reckon you have?
He is willing, he is willing to allow the town to move the snow onto your property as we have in the past.
Yes, that's fine.
The big issue, though, is for the staff, is we think it's more appropriate, and it takes away a lot of the misery of having to mess around with that area down there and leaving it the way it is. We think it would be, number one, less expensive for him to extend that roadway just at the south portion of his existing parking lot. As a matter of fact, the portion of the parking lot, Tony, as you can see, actually encroaches into the right-of-way area. It's been there for a long time, but it does, it does approach...
So you're saying, you're coming in here...
Right there, yes. It would save him more money.
Well, you know, I had, you know, to be upfront, you know, I've worked with Mr. Costello and the two engineers, and I also had a, what do you call it, a tree cutter?
Well, we're talking about away from the trees, though. We don't want, we don't want you to touch this reason.
No, we don't, no.
We understand that, but we want, we think it's more appropriate for you to just come into the back portion of the parking area.
Yeah, that's it.
You don't have to mess around with the back portion of the road that we have out there now.
No, that's right.
We don't have to change any plowing configurations, and, and I think it'll save you money in the long run to have the access point there. If the property were ever then redeveloped, and somebody were to come in and redevelop that site and want to do something of a higher commercial nature, we would probably require the extension of the road downpass through your property as a condition of approval. But for this kind of, yes, Tony, that's exactly where we are.
So the driveway would go there.
Yep.
There's a little piece here that's on our property.
Right, yeah, we got that.
And then we would set up the appropriate, you know, either easement or whatever between the town and the property owner to allow them for that access across...
Correct. Wait, they're doing both?
No, we would do one. That would be the preferred one. And I think it's preferred because the highway department then continues doing what it's doing today at the back end. He gets the ability to have access to the road, but, and I think it's, it's a less expensive run for you to just go off the back of your parking lot than to have to run all the way down through the back. As you can see, it's much simpler. You can see there's a lot of grading has to be done to accommodate that access road down to our...
And it's north of the trees.
It goes like this. It's north of the trees.
And it's north of the trees.
Yeah. Is that the only property you own, or do you own the other side?
Please, that's all I want, I want it. No, that's all, that's all I own right now, thank you, besides my own primary residence.
No, but I think about that, because where our favorite chocolate used to be, and then the building, there's a way that you could somehow connect them all through the back and be...
Well, there is a changing grade there that's kind of substantial, that we'd have to. And that was one of the reasons why Mark Valentine actually initially did not want to have the gutters put in, because there is a changing grade that's going to have to occur. We haven't, we haven't established what that access road should be at a certain grade yet, and he didn't want to put that in, and then have to pull it back out again and spend more money on it. So I think the simplest way for everybody is for you to utilize the back portion of your exit, or your parking lot, come out that way. They have access to the road if they want to go out to the east.
If they want to go out and go up the Five Mile Line.
And then go back up the Five Mile Line.
Or they can come in instead of coming down 441 and turning into the property, which is disaster.
You don't want to do that.
I know I've done a lot of work there. I've seen accidents. So whatever I suggested, it come in through Motts Lane down into the property.
Would you, have you considered eliminating your driveway, just as a safety feature? You're not obligated to, but you seem awfully concerned about it.
Well, no, I'd like to keep it there, I'd like to keep it there, yeah.
Maybe as an in versus an out?
Well, it is, it depends on the time of the day, they can go out, too.
Right, exactly, yeah.
You know, they can go out that way, you know.
Yeah, all right.
So are you in agreement then with the suggestion as they put forward by...
Oh, yes, it's been very thoroughly done.
Okay.
I've had quite a discussion with the engineers and of course with Jim, making sure things are done correctly, then, and doing so, I want improvised by putting the site plan done up by Costage.
Sure.
To make sure things are done properly.
So we would need the plan to be revised, okay? So we'll have to have that for our record as to how you're going to tie in. But we'll work with Eric Tate for the permit process, and they may require a small letter of credit or a certified check to ensure the work is done properly, and you need to get a permit to do that as well.
Okay.
But you know that because we've talked to you several times about it, so...
For the access point that Tony drew on the map?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
So you understand that, right?
Say it again.
You understand the supervisor's access point that he drew on the map a minute ago?
Yeah, we're gonna, you mean, we're gonna tie into that.
That's right.
Oh, yes, yes, that's fine.
Okay.
That, that there's purely understood, yeah.
It ties, at least as I understand it, that area to the south of your building, you've got stoned today.
Yes.
So essentially that if you...
Well, the driveway, the driveway's been cut out and stones put in, you know.
Here?
I can't see it from here.
Yep, absolutely.
I can't, I can't take a look.
Sure thing.
Well, yeah, here's the drive, here's where that's going to be right now.
Right, that's for sure.
This has all been done.
Yep. So from this point back has not been done, nothing's been done back here. So what is, what is being suggested is, is that that driveway come in off in Motts Lane at this point ties into your parking area here, and you don't have to install all of this.
Anything.
It's north of the trees, so you don't have to get into cutting the trees, and it provides what I think here...
Well, I'm just concerned about somebody coming in and making a turn to go around or to back up. I think that would be a factor, too. The coming right in here, it's going to be difficult for them to park in certain spaces there.
Okay, so you don't, you don't want to do this.
No, I do not.
You want to do this.
I want to do that.
But you only have, you only have an attorney that's looking at a person, looking at them on an appointment-only basis, according to his mom, I talked to her the other day. You're not going to have more than three or four cars in there in the daytime, according to them. So I wouldn't be overly concerned about...
I mean, I, all I, all I think you should be thinking about is that you've got this amount of area that you're looking to build out versus about three or four times that.
Well, I'm more concerned with the cost of doing either or.
The cost would be much less with what he's proposing.
The cost is, I don't know, I haven't gotten a real cost in terms of putting it in up there, you know.
Well, it's going to be a lot less. And the other problem, the other issue is, it's going to alleviate confusion, you're talking about confusion if somebody going in it. It's going to alleviate a lot of confusion, because if people have a tendency to continue on a road that's paved, they're going to end up in your backyard anyways. And we, none of us want them back there. You don't want them back there, and the town's concerned because they might keep going down the hill.
I think it's appropriate to allow Mr. Pittenarrow the time to get whatever estimates you need, to compare the two different possibilities, and we can revisit them.
I just think it's going to save you a lot of money.
What if someone's going to come in here like this? I mean, suppose they had four or five clients, the attorney. How are they going to come in here like this and come around like this and park?
Well, they could park actually right behind the building.
Are you saying you come in like this and park here, and then, and then be able to go out, to go out?
They could still go out.
Well...
I think it's going to save you a lot of money.
I don't think it's going to be a...
She indicated to me if they had, if they had three or four cars a day, that would be a lot.
And what happens if we change the, what happens if...
Well, if you change the use, you have to come back to the...
What do we have to change the use then?
You have to come back to the town board for approval.
All we have to do is we got a high, high activity situation.
Well, you can only have a level of use that is allowed for.
Wouldn't we have a double officer, if we have a doctor's office, or a psychiatrist, or pediatrician?
Then you may need to do improvements to the property to accommodate it.
But now I've already done it.
Yeah, but I'll be honest with you, I'm not too keen on as proposed, anyway. You have, you have a town road that ends at a line, I mean, I would want that up to town specs, similar to the rest of Motts Lane. The town is going to plow the snow where it plows the snow, and it could be dumped right at your access, right at your access point, anyway, because the town plows not going down in the driveway into the back of your property. So, you know, and then if there is discussion future about, you know, access points through the rear of those properties, I just, I'm not, I don't think the parking is going to be much of a concern, that where you strike the lines, even if you have striped lines, I don't know if you need to do that, but...
But what if we made it down by the trees here?
Well, that's fine, too.
I mean, down this or further, you're going to need some room to get in here to swing them out.
If you want to spend the money on your property to make that access point go further, that's fine. We were just trying to minimize the amount of work that you'd have to do.
Is there an access point, any of our...
Well, I mean, I don't know, I haven't gotten a cost, Jim, so I don't know what the cost is.
Oh, it's just as Paul says.
It's premature for us to decide on this tonight. We don't want, and we don't want to rush you or back you into a corner until you have all the information you need as to what would be the best option.
So if you want to talk to Mr. Costage about looking at those options, is the one Tony proposed, and then the one you're thinking about now, just a little bit south of that, north of the trees, go ahead and talk to them and see what they come up with, with an answer, so that you can come back to the board.
I'd move that we table it for two weeks.
Second thought.
Okay. So it's been moved to table, seconded by Linda. And so the, the thing that I think is important, Mr. Pittenarrow, is, is maybe to go back and have a broader conversation with Mr. Costage about a couple of different thoughts or ideas that you, that you have, you know, whether it be where I drew that in, or if it's a little further south where you, you thought it might be better off, but I think it might be something that, that you...
Can I ask, can I ask, please, the board, why is it that you don't want this here?
Well, I've already expressed my thoughts on that, I mean...
I mean, you said, I mean, openly, openly, why is it that you don't want this?
People are listening to the project review committee who understands the engineering of the area, they're making the recommendations, we're listening to in-approximated town property.
The other thing, too, is you're going to have people that are going to come down that hill, thinking that the road's been extended by the town or whomever, and they're not going to make that turn out to Penfield Road, they're going to continue on to your property, then realize they've made a mistake, they're either going to back out, or they're going to continue on to your building and then have to come out onto Penfield Road in a dangerous situation, as you note, is the case of that property.
They do the same thing with coming down to the Rockford Building.
But they make a right-hand turn out to Penfield Road, they can't make a left.
Sometimes they slide this way, too.
Well, understood, but, but you're now creating a situation where they're going to make those movements, not knowing that they can't get out. And you're probably going to have a lot more traffic on your property than you really want.
So, so the objective of this part here that I tie into the town, is that what you're concerned is?
Yeah.
Because if I put a road, this is, this is the property that I had, and if I could put a road in, I want to be able to tie into your town.
So, so this is, this is what I would say, is, is if you want to go in this direction, then I think I'm of the same opinion as Mr. Quinn, and that is, is that this segment would be built to the property line, would be built to town specs the whole way.
Yes.
So it would be base, it would be, it would be, it would be the asphalt, it would be the gutters, that would be built to town specs. And then the, the big issue that I have is that where do we plow the snow to? Now we're plowing, you know...
But wouldn't it be my responsibility, though, at that point?
I'll leave, I'll leave you right there, I'll leave you eight feet of snow at that, at that end. When we come in and plow, it'll leave you eight feet of snow at that, at that point.
Why don't you just leave me the responsibility of clearing the snow?
Well...
I have a, I have a plow, I have some good one. He'd be glad to do that, that's only 20 feet, 30 feet.
No, I, I get that, I get that. So we're going to come in, we're going to come in off in here, we're going to have a full plow, and we're going to dump it right there. You're going to have, you're going to have a six or eight foot wall of snow.
We're not coming in here, we'll be coming in this way.
Absolutely.
Coming in this way, won't you?
No, I mean, you got to plow, you got a two, you got a two-lane road, we got to plow both lanes. So we come off in 441, and we plow in this way, and then we plow up, and then we come reverse back up.
Isn't 441, you can only come in that way or exit that way?
No, you come in...
In and out. You can come in this way.
You come in and out that way. So when we plow 441, we plow into here and dump. We back up and we plow up to Five Mile Line Road, we come reversed back down through, and we continue up.
Well, then dump it there and I'll take care of it.
So you're going to build this to town specs?
Yeah.
And you're going to accept the responsibility, so regardless of the amount of snow?
That's right.
Let's table it.
Yeah, I think, I think what the applicant...
Sorry, table, yeah.
I think what the applicant should do is take a look at the pricing of the multiple options, and that might give you an idea as to which direction you want to propose back to the town.
Well, I'm looking at the accountability, accountability, the accessibility for someone to come in like that and be able to access the parking lot, which I've spent thousands to do, okay, to make it accommodating to the people in the house. I put in a, I did the rehab on the exterior of the building, so it looks professional for the town.
It does.
Okay? So I'm saying to myself, what's wrong with, what's wrong with something along this lane here? And I didn't understand what your question was, Mr. Quinn.
Well, I have a question, I had a comment.
A comment?
Well, it's town property up to that point, I'm not even on board with us just leaving snow for you to plow on town property.
No.
So it's a liability for us, whether you want to plow it or not. So my concern...
Well, then, wait a minute, that could all be written up as a liability, who...
I would never agree to that.
Who accepts a liability?
I wouldn't, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that. And, and so it's already been tabled, I would recommend, like, it's been tabled, reviewing, you know, the economics of the various options, and, you know, returning with a plan or two, but, you know...
Have you taken a look at the site?
Yeah, because I think if, if you want us to make a decision tonight, I don't think you're going to like the decision.
Okay.
That's why I think if you get a couple more weeks to digest and get some more information, I think maybe there might be a common ground here.
I think, I think your, I think your second proposal there, coming down south of the, the parking lot, has a lot of merit. It now gives you the ability to come in and then make the movement northward into the parking lot safer, and, and you've got better vehicle movement on that site that way. I think that has a lot of merit, and it probably saves you money, and it keeps our plowing processes intact and not having to mess around figuring out ways to get that out of your driveway.
But I still...
And I think it takes away the, the safety factor of people going into your property, and it shouldn't be...
But I still, I'm still using your property here.
That's, that's fine, that's...
See, no, no.
You're going to be using our property to get access to your driveway anyways, or to your parking lot. That's, that's, that's not an issue. Everybody has to use our right-of-way to get to their property in one way or another.
Sounds like there's some more work that needs to be done after tonight, so in two weeks, we can revisit this.
Yep.
So you want me to pursue then obtaining a valuation in terms of cost?
For yourself, yes, so that you know.
What you're saying is, other than that location?
Yes, yes.
The feeling of the board?
Yes.
And as you know, the plan that you're showing there does not show town specifications for a dedicated road. It shows a private drive specification, there are no gutters on that, on that spec, and there's no depth to base or top.
And the reason, the reason we left it short of the property line, so as we plow the snow, we have a place to store the snow on our property. That, that was the goal of that, that little darker patch, as we make, it's a snow storage area, and we just leave it, we leave it there. And again, we don't plow on private property. So I think, as, I think as a number of board members have indicated, Mr. Pittenarrow, I think it'd be, it would be good to get a, get a cost estimate, to look at your different options, what it's going to cost you at different...
Or either take the trees down and go through that.
No, you don't even have to do that. No, you don't even have to do that.
I mean, I'm not advocating to take the trees down, those trees aren't-
Just stay on the side.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure they got enough room to swing in and swing out.
Right, right.
That'd be fine.
Yeah, exactly.
That'd be fine.
We're just taking our trees down.
Right, no.
No, I concur with that, I'm glad to look at that.
I think it would be good, you know, just to get an idea and an understanding of what it's going to cost you to, to do that.
And it takes stuffs-
I'm going to be coming across probably 10, 20 feet of your property.
Mm-hmm.
Same thing, now would I have to tie-
You'd be doing it anywhere.
See, here's what we've had done too, I've already had someone look at it, Mr. Costage, okay?
Okay.
We got 40 feet, we're going to have to come in 40 feet of your driveway, we have to put in 40 feet of asphalt to accommodate meeting your road.
But look at what you're putting in to come down to the bottom part of the property.
Well, still, we got the cost versus the cost from right on this zone, very, very similar, very close.
I can't believe that's true.
Well, I would just say that the stark difference is that would be, the northern portion would be a private driveway into Mott's Lane, the southern portion is a town dedicated road.
A portion of it.
A portion of it, and that's a major difference.
It's a very expensive proposition.
Well, you know, we still got, all right.
Very expensive, I think they're giving you an option here that you should-
No, I appreciate the opinion, don't misunderstand me, I'm not-
And I, I would encourage having some further conversation with Mr. Costage, and certainly if Mr. Costage would like to have, you know, some broader conversations with the town, I would encourage, you know, working with Mr. Tate and Mr. Valentine.
Okay.
I think those would be the two individuals.
I think there's a solution, it's just some more information needs to be vetted out.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Unless we hear, unless we hear otherwise, we'll plan on seeing you on August 8.
Mm-hmm.